Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, again, good evening. We're going to start right out with Dr. Dane. She has a couple of students from the Olathe Advanced Technical Center. Love to hear what they're up to.
Absolutely.
We also have Mrs. Amy Schultz.
Yes, well, good evening. We are excited to be here tonight. You know, every month we recognize different students and the amazing things that they have going on. And last month, we had the students from OATC at a TNL meeting who completely blew my socks off, and they said, "We have got to get this in front of the board so they can hear the amazing things going on at OATC," because sometimes I think it might be one of our best-kept secrets. So, secrets no more. So, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Amy Stoles, who's the administrator at OATC, and three of her fabulous student leaders. You're in for a treat.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. We are blessed to have three state officers for Skills USA, which is our career tech student organization. I'd like to introduce them, and then we're going to go ahead and get into our presentation, which is kindness and gratitude, looking at the several things that we have going on in our building that go from our classrooms to our community. So, I'd like to introduce Brandon York, who is our president for the state of Kansas for Skills USA, Brian Reed Miller, who is our vice president for Skills USA, Kansas, and Ashton Albright, who is parliamentarian for Skills USA, state of Kansas.
Alrighty. How we doing tonight?
Doing good.
Doing good. Alright, so Skills USA is a student-based organization that focuses on technical skills as well as soft skills needed in the workplace. Job-ready day one is our motto this year. That's what we're going for. So, they teach you everything you need to know with hands-on skills, whether it be from cosmetology all the way to welding. We do it all. They also teach you how to be proper in the workplace, give good presentation skills, and just showing respect to those around you no matter where you're at.
Skills USA also just bases it all on leading students and showing how leadership can really push us to our full potential. Even in OATC, we learn how to do meetings properly, wrapping a gavel, standing up, doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and so on and so forth.
Skills USA, as well as doing those wonderful things, also teaches us how to be a leader for future business, future workplaces, future organizations. They help us learn how, do you, like Brian said, proper meetings, and they help us just to be more competent and help us with public speaking.
So, at OATC, we have our building leadership teams. For those of you that know a little bit about OATC, we're divided throughout the school day. We have a morning group and an afternoon group, so first through third hour, and then fifth through seventh for the rest of the day. Each one of those building leadership teams, they divide into their own leadership group. So, even though you may not be the state president, vice president, or parliamentarian, you could be classroom, building, or district before any of those. So, being part of the building leadership team, I'm the president of the morning, whereas Ryan is the president of the afternoon. We plan stuff like fundraising, community service, social events for OATC to get the word out there to everybody, as well as professional development. So, like, our next meeting we're going to have with professional development, we're going to be teaching the students of OATC how to properly tie a tie.
With, as all of Brandon said, we, all our fundraising activities, every social event, everything that we do, it's all planned by the students. We're given a basis and just a solid foundation from Ms. Stolt, and then we just get to it. Everything that we do, we have our own secretaries, and we keep our own agendas, and we really keep to it. And we have such a great idea, and we just really put it out there, and it's all run, held, and led all by students.
Also, for our building leadership team, we love to express the importance of leadership and helping out your community. We love to do community service, and as you'll see in the presentation, we have a ton of those that we've done recently.
So, first up, we have our trunk-or-treat. This was an idea that just came to us, and she was like, "Let's do it. Let's get the word out there about OATC and see what we can do for just elementary schools and kids in our neighborhoods." So, everything that we've done, and as you can see here, we're chilling out by our cars and whatnot and having a good old time. It was, it was great. Ms. Stoles came to us and said, "Hey, we're going to have a trunk-or-treat. We're going to have it, and you guys figure it out." So, we had to find a date. We had to find a time. We had to figure out how we're going to get the candy, how we're going to get to talk to it. And so, we talked to elementary schools, and this was all done by students. There was nothing that was done by teachers and administration. It was just students, get, get your hands dirty, and get in there and get it done.
So, for our Veterans Community Project, our construction trades program have been building two houses to help out veterans who need a little extra help. These houses will include plumbing, electricity, insulation, basically everything you need to live off of, and I'm pretty sure they're working on the framework. And then, we're going to take that part, ship it down to KCMO, where they're going to put it in a neighborhood, so our veterans have somewhere to live because they served our country, so we should help out with them and serve them.
Alrighty. Do we have any veterans in the room right now? Thank you for your service. The next one we did here is the Cars for Heroes. As you can see, the goofy-looking fellow up there in the bottom left wearing the glasses cleans up pretty sharply. But Cars for Heroes, we had a van donated to us, and with that van, we completely took it from, you wouldn't want to drive that thing two blocks, to you're able to drive that thing across the country. Within getting the van, I think within about two months, we did all the preventative maintenance, such as spark plugs, wires, all the fluid changes. We ended up putting new tires on it, completely redoing the brake system on it, and as you can see in the bottom-left picture, we pulled the transmission, had it rebuilt, and put it back in. That was entirely done by students. We all went in on our days off on Saturday morning for maybe two or three hours, and put the work in to get that van ready to go on December 15th for a veteran in need.
We were approached by Santa Fe Trail over the summer, wanting an event entry sculpture for their, for their school building. And so, our welding students have been working with their administration. They created the plan. We were given a small budget to work with, and the students have been in charge of all of this. And so, it will be unveiled on January 24th at the 50th anniversary for Santa Fe Trail. The next one I'd like to talk to you about is that not only do we have great kids, but our teachers are over-the-top and innovative in that as well. Mr. Hensley, who's one of our auto tech teachers, brought an idea. We have a new course, Alternative Power, and we're like, "How are we going to do this?" We always have our cars that run on gasoline and so forth. So, he had the idea of getting a golf cart. Not only getting a golf cart, we were writing a grant, which thank you, Olathe Public School Foundation for that. We are now, we met with someone. We are extending the golf cart, so our welders are a part of this. We met with someone in order to make it. We're making it ADA compliant. And so, the golf cart is extended. It carries six people. It will have a ramp, and then wheelchair locks, so that we can move people. This is going to be used at football games, anything at the district stadiums, Olathe Public School Foundation breakfast, as well as graduation. And so, that's going to allow our students to be a part. We're going to train them as ambassadors, so that they will go along with the teacher who's driving the cart, and so we can work on some of those soft skills in the community and have them work with community patrons. So, here's a bit of the process. There is the golf cart. Auto collision. It's going to get a spiffy paint job. And then, the welders, and they're working to extend that and make it so that we can make it wheelchair-accessible.
Alrighty. So, as you can see up there, that was our, our canned food drive. We just finished up with that about a week or two ago. In total there, there's over 5,000 cans in that picture. I think we finished around 5,090, so just a hair over 5,000 there. All the work that was done for that was strictly to the students. They worked every bit of themselves to go out and get those cans. We had some students who just went around, asked for donations, cleaned out grandma and grandpa's fridge, and we have other students who went out and spent the money to win some of the prizes that we ended up giving away for the canned food drive. We ended up donating 4,000 of those cans to the National Guard, and then the remainder, so 1,090 of those cans, ended up going to the Salvation Army. So, I thought that was pretty big for us. We had a couple different companies that we reached out to that ended up helping us. I reached out to the local Harley-Davidson dealership, Rawhide Harley-Davidson, and their, their general manager and I sat down, had a conversation, and we decided he would let me come in on their Veterans Weekend during their big bash that they had going on, and raffle off different items that they donated to me. I ended up getting a sign from them that was probably about as big as the face of this desk. It was a $200 sign, and he just was willing to let me have it to donate off for what we had going on there. Another company that also helped us out was Divine K9. They're a local grooming shop that's over by the Jumpin' Catfish. The owner is a family friend of mine. I've known them since I was in elementary school. It's been a while now, looking back on it. But she did a thing where anyone that went to get their dogs groomed there, you know, they got a little incentive for bringing us, for bringing us cans. So, I think in total, like I said, we had 5,090 cans and ended up getting all those out, which is an all-time high compared to where we were last year. So, it was, it was awesome to see all those cans just one week, little bit of something, and the next week, they're all there. But here are the people that we think went above and beyond for the canned food drive. Those were the people who were out in the community asking for cans. And then, the gentleman on the right there in the underarm hoodie ended up bringing over 600 cans. So, he was a big part to what we had.
We did deliver them to the National Guard, and Jamie, who is pictured in the sweatshirt up there, those all stayed local. Last weekend, they had a Christmas party for veterans who had just returned, and all of the food that we collected went to these families whose, they have just returned to the country from service, so.
So, the Student Leader Day, that was one of the days we took at OATC right before Thanksgiving break. Student Leader Day was, we broke everyone up into different groups. So, not only were you just with your class for that activity, we intermingled all the different classrooms, so maybe you would have been working with someone that you may have not worked with before. So, it kind of gives everyone the sense of, not everyone's the same, you know, you've got to learn to adapt and overcome any challenge you might face out in the real world. We spent the day playing different games, focusing on leadership activities, and planning community service events. So, I'll let these two kind of talk a little bit more about those.
So, we played a few different games. The first one that we played was like a roll-the-dice game. So, there'd be, I think, about 10 people on the table. So, you'd roll the dice, and whatever number you got, you pulled a card up on the table. And then, you, you could get anyone on your team to get up there and do the activity with you, if it was, you know, running around the room, you know, blindfolded, slapping all the corners, to, you know, just walking around the table, going from 100 to 1, and doing activities like that. And so, those were really good, and you could really work with your team, and it was really good team-building activity. Another one that we had was all screwed up, and we took these wooden platforms, and we had these big, old, long bolts, and then you had the, the nuts, and you had to screw them all. They'd be all on the bottom, and you had to screw them all the way up, and then screw them onto another one. And so, you'd have to, and we made it a big, old competition, and all these kids were freaking out because they wanted to have more than the next person. It was like, wow, they really liked just getting on it. And, you know, they didn't have as much energy in the beginning. They all thought it was kind of dumb and stupid, but by the end of it, they were all loving it, and they were having a good old time and being real competitive. And so, it was a really fun activity for all of them to really just get together and work as a team and work really strongly with each other.
So, after the games, we ended up making blankets for the Salvation Army, and then we also made dog toys for the Humane Society as our community service project, because, like I said, we really want to serve the community and express the importance of serving our community.
So, Pennies for Shoes is this, we collect a bunch of pennies, and they're all for the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. And so, we get all these little buckets, and we get pink cans, and we cut the tops out of them. And so, we have students collect all the cans. As you can see up here, we have Mr. Hensley. He's our smallest instructor, and we, we make him hold, we make him hold all the cans. And so, we weigh him first, and he doesn't like to be weighed as much as we think, but he weighs it first, and then we put the cans with him, and then we see how much the weight increases. And so, we do this, and we raised a couple hundred dollars last year, and it was phenomenal. One of the things that we do with this is we also have our Pennies for Shoes. We have an auction. So, all, we auction off different items, as in like, as you can see up there, we have paintings from cars, and then we have, "You can have lunch with Ms. Stoles," or, you know, "Have a date with me." And so, some of those are really nice. And so, some of those options, but all the money that we did for the auctions, all those things went to Pennies for Shoes, and then we took it to the bank, and we had it just all delivered there. And it's a really great opportunity. We have students come in, and we have them bring in all their change from their cars, and we have them, you know, dump out mom's coin jar at home, and it's just really awesome. It's really great to see what we can do.
Just the last thing that I would like to, to share with you is that last week, we were invited to the NAREY luncheon. We partnered with NAREY last year, which is the National, National Association of Remodeling Industry. We received a grant from them last year, and they really liked what we were doing in our building. And so, they have partnered. We have a mentor that is assigned to our building as well. The, this association has done great things for us. We have kids, seven kids that have mentors, as well as been offered jobs post-secondary with training. And so, just very exciting. We were invited to speak to them, and we went in thanks for what they have done with us and their Futures Fund and supporting us. And so, just wanted to share with you what some stuff going on in the construction area as well. So... Mrs. Tynes, we're going to ask her to come forward, and we'd just like you to recognize her as well. Mrs. Tynes comes out and works with our students in order to get them ready to run for state office, as well as to prepare for state championship, which is in April, for their prepared speeches and impromptu speeches. And so, we want you to also recognize kind of the power behind us, and that is Mrs. Tynes.
So, I know with a few familiar faces in this room, that you guys have probably heard this story maybe once or even twice, but I'm going to tell it again. So, my junior year, I was a state officer as well, so I'm in my second term right now. But I walked in to talk to Ms. Tynes about the, the speech I was going to be giving, and she said, "So, where's your speech?" I said, "Oh, I'm just going to wing it." And she very sternly told me I was not going to, and it was probably a good thing that I didn't wing it, because when I, she asked me to stand up and give my speech right then and there, I had no clue what to say. So, if I would have gone all the way to the Fall Leadership Conference and given the speech that I thought I was going to give, it would have been a very bad disaster. But through Ms. Tynes, she's helped boost my confidence within just a few days to get me ready to go and do things like prepare a speech for the Department of Education for the state of Kansas, which is something I will be doing next month at the Capitol. She works with all of our students, like Ms. Stole said. She prepares us for state, which we had four gold medalists last year at state, and those were in soft skill competitions. So, we had job demonstration, job interview, and then just a couple of others that went with that. Without the, the help Ms. Tynes provides for us, I really don't think any of us at OATC could have gotten as far as we have so far.
I, I was, this is my first year in my first term doing Skills USA, and I'm now the vice president. And I wouldn't be in the position that I am now without Ms. Tynes. I would have a presentation that was me giving three points and walking across the stage and saying why I'm a good leader and why you should vote for me. But she just really put it together and said, "Hey, here's how you need to do it. Here's the plan. Here's the game plan. Let's get it going." And so, just really pushed us to where we need to be and really pushed us to give an actual presentation that was more than just why I'm a great guy.
I would really like to thank Ms. Tynes, because she helped me have the confidence to be able to speak up here, because a couple months ago, I would not be up here speaking in front of all of you. I would be too nervous or too scared to speak in front of all of you. So, I'm really thankful to have her help us with our speeches when we need it, and she really helps us make a difference.
Ms. Tynes, would you accept our token of appreciation?
Without Mrs. Tynes, we would not have the pictures that are in front of us, and that would be them lighting the candle as state officers. Ashton, Ryan, and Brandon. Any questions?
We are so proud of you. Thank you very much for being here this evening. This is what we want to hear at our board meetings. We want to hear from students and teachers. It's great to see what you're doing in the classroom, but most importantly, how you're going out into the community as an ambassador of the, of your group, of your school, and also Olathe. Not only your, your life's being touched, but you're, you're touching other lives as well, and you can just see that in, in the work that you're doing. Very, very proud of you. Thank you. Other comments from board members?
You guys are so professional, and you look great, and you make us really proud. I'm sure your handshakes are firm, and you make eye contact. And thank you, Mrs. Tynes and Mrs. Stolt. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
How much did you get for that date with you?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's this year. It'll be a for-treat.
Make sure you report back to us.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Fellow board member, just to embarrass her if I can. Mrs. Stolt is my neat. Like a proud father.
Glad to have her here. Alright, 2.02, understanding your 2017 real estate taxes. Mr. John Hutchinson, this ought to liven this group up a lot.
Tough, tough grip to follow, though. Have to brush up on my presentation skills. I, I know this seems somewhat of a fundamental presentation, but actually, it's a little more complicated than most people realize. I just want to make sure everybody understands what portion of the tax bill represents the school district, and as they take a look at some of the changes over the past year. This is an example of a, of a tax bill. And basically, if you look at these two values, that is the amount that the property value went up, and that is controlled by the assessor's office, not the school district. So, in this particular tax bill, it's a 6% increase. It went up $22,700. I've graded out everything that isn't the school district. The school district is made up of really three tax lines. It's our unified, our school gen, and our bond. Let's work backwards. Bond is bond and interest. It's that one levy that pays our bonds. School gen is the statewide 20 mils, and then our other six smaller levies, and LOB, all rolled up into one line. Now, some people might race across to the right side and say, "Oh, my gosh, it's gone up about 28%," if you just add up those three percentages. But I was trying to remember what property that is from grade school, but I couldn't seem to remember it. But I just know you cannot add percentages together when they've all come from different variables. So, what you really have to do is look at all three, three of those lines together. So, what we really have is a tax rate that went from 67.774 to 71.174, or a 5% increase, or 3.4 mils. If you look at the dollars associated with that, this tax bill goes up $333.82. That's a combined 11.5%, not 28%. And that's a combination of that 6% valuation increase and a 5% rate increase. Many of you know that Olathe West High School initially was in preliminary assessed valuation figures and was later taken out after we had set our budget, and the tax bills are based on that value coming out. The impact of that, what happens is, we, the board levies a dollar amount. They're not really setting tax rates. So, the dollar amount stays the same, but as the valuation went down, the county automatically adjusts the rate up. That's exactly what they're supposed to do. So, where we were targeting around a 2.99 mil rate increase, in the end, it became 3.4. The dollars are the same. The same budgetary needs are there that are, that those dollars are there to back up. The impact on this particular tax bill of that is $20.31. In our district, the estimated average home price right now is $267,867. So, the average home's going to see a $16 or $17 increase in their tax bill due to that. If you look at the other side, the other portion of your tax bill, that looks at the total dollars for the district, or across the whole, the county, actually. So, the same 5% is there, but when you look at the raw dollars, the dollars are going up 14.4%. So, that, if you zero in on just those three lines, once again, you can't just add all the percentages together. Does it seem to make sense? Any questions?
So, the $16.94 on average for the home, is that the net impact of our mil levy or of the Olathe West?
Of the Olathe West being in the preliminary numbers and then, and then later removed.
Do you know what the average home is paying based on our increase this year?
I, I have that information, but I don't want to misquote that, but I'd be happy to get that, where they can let you know.
Thank you. Sorry to surprise you with that.
Sure.
Other questions for John?
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me light your presentation, John. I like it. We still have plenty of time to proceed through our agenda. If the board would mind taking up the action and consent items. I'd like to just note the special board meeting on January the 8th of 2018, just when the swearing-in ceremony with our new board member, Brian Geary, myself, and also Amy Martin.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.08 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Leta Felter and a second by Shannon Wickliffe. Joy?
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
And action items. Several items on here. If there is any item, what's somebody like to ask a question on or pull? I think we do have maybe John and Dustin here that may want to discuss just a little bit about this. 6.01, approval of bond resolutions.
Absolutely. As you know, we have done an issue of 2017 A Bonds, and also have done a refinancing, had some very favorable pricing. But I'll let Dustin kind of explain. I know there are questions about what's happening at the federal level and at the state level and the impact on future bond issues, so I'm just going to turn it over to Dustin.
Thanks, John.
Good evening. Good to see everyone again. Just a quick summary and rundown from, from the bond sales that we discussed a month ago. Obviously, the things turned out very, very well. Average rate on the, on the A Bonds was a 3.05%. That includes a technology component and a non-technology component, 20-year financing. The refinancing went very well as well. We reduced the term from, from about five years. We're paying those bonds off five years earlier than planned. Total savings is a little more than $2.3 million. Again, kind of the grand total then since 2014, I think this is obviously something we're all very proud of. A little less than $25.5 million in total savings since 2014. The one thing I think is important, too, if you look at all the statistics that we evaluate in terms of the planning, there's been a lot of building going on in the school district the last 10 years, a lot of bond financings. Really, the plan that we've, we've set forth really amortizes those bonds very, very quickly. Over the next little, little less than 16 years, we pay off about 90% of our bonds. Again, we're going to have more projects. Obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into maintaining and technology for 50s-plus buildings. I think it's pretty impressive that, that we pay off 90% in 15 years. So, that's really just a summary of, of the bond financings and the two resolutions before you really just formally adopt or formally approve those, those sales as well. And then, I think maybe some questions about just state bond cap that we want to just touch on briefly.
Also, maybe a question on the federal?
I had a question on that.
Oh, more federal?
Yeah, and then also, we had discussed this weekend a little bit about the federal tax bill and how that might negatively, negatively affect our bond activity in the future.
So, a lot of things going on, both federal level and also state level with, with bond cap and new school finance formula. I guess on the federal perspective, obviously, the, both the House and the Senate have approved the, the tax reform bills. Obviously, now it's in conference committee. A number of things impact bond issues. I guess maybe the one, the thing that impacts school districts and local governments across the country is primarily is what's called taking away advanced refinancings. And both the House bill and Senate bill included provisions that eliminate that type of refinancing. And really, what that refinancing is, it's when, when any type of entity refinances bonds in advance of the call date or redemption date on those bonds. So, again, all bond issues typically have call dates or redemption dates on them. The IRS is always allowed entities to do, one, advanced refinancing over the life of a bond issue for the purpose of, if rates seem reasonable and we can capture savings, you can do so before those bonds are actually pre-paled or recallable. So, with this provision in both the House and Senate bill, it would eliminate that, that opportunity for municipal entities to do that type of refinancing, which- to do that type of refinancing, which if this were in place four years ago, we would not be in a position to save the $25 million, right? So I think it's probably pretty unlikely that we, there are so many amendments to that that get that change because it's both in the House and Senate bill. It's very unlikely that they're going to be allowing that going forward. So it really, it really starts, really has to, really end up, we have to be more creative in when we do financings, right? We have to be, figure out how we, how we put in more unique call features in bond issues to allow more flexibility for municipal entities to prepay bonds earlier. The reality of where we stand right now, the fortunate part is we've done all the refinancings that we can. We've captured all the savings that we can at this particular time. Really, any type of future refinancing that we would do would be right at the call date of the bond. So really, we're probably 2022 to 2024 before we'd be at the point where we could do what's called a current refunding, which is a refunding done at the redemption date of the bonds. So that's, that's really the impact from a federal perspective and how, what I think is probably most relevant to the school district. Again, the good news is that we, we're in a position where we've done everything that we can to capture the savings while we can, particularly before year end. Any questions on?
Well, a quick question and maybe educate us a little bit. So obviously, it's detrimental to us. Because if this was in place, we wouldn't have even to do money at the same point. So what is the purpose of it? Why are, why is this being enacted? There's got to be a positive side somewhere for people to even do this. Can you educate us a little bit on that, the logic and the thought process for that?
Logic, that's a good one.
We'll take the logic part away.
So, so, so I think, I think it's a balancing act, really. So I think, you know, as we look at it, I'm not, I'm not going to be an expert on the tax reform proposal, but I think if, I'd say, well, what's the primary purpose of the tax reform proposal? It's corporate tax rates, right? Going from 35% to 20%, that's really kind of the threshold. And so I think it's like anything else. It's okay, well, by doing this, it costs us X amount of dollars, right? We're getting less amount of revenues from going from 35 to 20. And so then how do we, how do we try to offset that revenue loss on this side of the equation? And so because of that, they're looking at kind of all these different things on the other side and say, well, what can we take away or eliminate or reduce to bring in more revenues to offset the reduction on the corporate tax rate side? And this happens to be one of them. And again, I, I think probably in the grand scheme of things, this is, we're kind of like a fly, really. I mean, this is such a minor thing, but the little things are really adding up to try to offset what the real cost is. And you think about, so advanced refinancings really allow more bonds to be in the bond market, right? And you think about, if you look back historically, right now, I would say that probably half of the ish bond issuance in the country is these advanced refinancings. So you take away this, this form of financing, now there's less tax-exempt bonds in the marketplace. And think about buyers of tax-exempt bonds don't pay income tax on those bonds. So now we're reducing the size of the bond market. So these investors are having to buy other sorts of securities that maybe they're now they're paying tax on, which then helps offset, you know, the big, the big thing, so.
You described that beautifully. The slang word, they call it a pay-for. It paves for the cuts, which it won't add up to the amount of the cut, but it's a effort towards it. Can you clarify, so the almost 25 million, yay, thank you. Did we also shorten our time of indebtedness?
We did. In particular, just with the one particular issue, which is 2010 bonds. We did shorten it. Those bonds were originally financed over a 20-year period, and they had a final maturity of 2029. We've shortened it and will pay them off by 2025.
A four-year? Did you say two?
Five years, I'm sorry.
Five years, 20?
Maybe it was 30. Yeah, I'm sorry, it was 2030, they matured. Now we're paying it up in 2025.
Okay, sorry, it was my ADD.
No, no, it's fine.
Okay, so, so it's not just money it's saving us?
The term, we're shortening them a term, too.
Which impacts our ability to plan and adapt in the future, especially growing districts.
It does.
The collective hour ability.
And we're, and we're doing that, again, with maintaining the current bond interest mil levy. And in fact, obviously, all the modeling that we've worked with the board and John and Merle on and the Finance Committee on, really, we have a, really a long-term financial plan that even with paying them off early, we still have the capacity in the mil levy and the budget flexibility to, to look at future projects. And again, I know that we have a large amount of buildings and deferred maintenance and aging facilities and technology. Those things do add up, and there'll be other projects down the road as well.
You want to talk about the state?
Oh, bond cap? Yeah, so, so I think, you know, bond cap is something we're obviously watching very, very closely. And as many of you are aware, in the last legislative session, really, really kind of last minute, it was, there's this provision kind of thrown into the bill that kind of created a bond cap in Kansas. And really, what that bond cap does is it prohibits the State Board of Education from authorizing school district bond elections in an amount greater than the aggregate amount of bonds that were paid off by all Kansas school districts in the preceding year. So as an example, if we look back at 2016, '17, Kansas school districts made principal payments about $330 million in aggregate among all Kansas school districts. That becomes the bond cap for 2017, '18. So the State Department of Education or State Board of Education cannot approve bond elections in an amount that exceeds $330 million. Now, that may seem like it's a, that's a lot of bonds. But when you think about the growing of school districts and the cost of construction and the, and the new facilities, $330 million can obviously be used up fairly, very quickly. I think as we look at this fiscal year, we were actually out of bond cap middle of October. We, we were completely out of bond cap. There were some failed elections in November. So with failed elections, those elections, those failed elections, that bond authority goes back towards the cap. I suspect we'll probably be out of it by the end of the year in terms of the cap dollars. I think the challenging part is going forward because it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So with this framework in place, the unfortunate part about this is it sets up school districts to compete against each other for bond cap. And obviously, we're a very diverse state with respect to districts having different needs for facilities. And so I think the challenging part is going to be is it's when you submit an application, and again, whenever we do a bond election, we've got to get approval from the State Board to have that bond election. Once we submit that application, we're now in line for bond cap. Well, if we're out of bond cap in this fiscal year, and we know there's going to be $310 million approximately in 2017, sorry, 2018, '19, what's going to happen is, is school districts are going to get lined up so that come the first day of the fiscal year, they're submitting bond applications to get in line for that $310 million allocation. So again, it's, we have districts now competing against each other that are trying to, you know, have facilities that are educating kids, number one, which creates a challenge. And then, and then we may have districts that could use all the cap, right? I mean, there's, there's, I mean, if we, if we were, if we had the cap in place when we did Alatha West High School, we'd be using a lot of the cap. So there's, there's districts that have those same sorts of projects that they're trying to get in line for, which is going to cause problems. I think there's an, obviously, KSB is very, very active in this. KSSA is very active in this. I think there's, there's some, it's becoming a legislative priority this next legislative session to help legislators understand what does a bond cap really do in terms of hurting school districts, but also, you know, limiting economic activity, right? There's a lot of dollars being turned over in communities with projects. So we're hopeful that it does become a priority, and we're working with those organizations to provide assistance as much as we can. That's a long, that was a long winded there.
No, it's good.
Thanks, Dustin.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah.
Other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion then for any other items anybody wanted to talk about or pull.
I just had a general question about 6.05, just how that national purchasing contract works? Sorry, I, or yeah?
All right, how the contract works?
Yeah, I just, here since you don't, we don't competitively bid it, I assume that's part of the process.
Well, yeah, but the contract itself is competitively, competitively bid. So they've gone out on behalf of districts and public entities all across the United States and said, no, these are the products that schools need to buy. And so put that up for public bids and then receive those responses back.
Okay. So they've already done bidding for it?
Exactly, right.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just on 6.02, so the change orders. So just Greg, a little curious about electrical. Again, 59,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a little bit bigger than everything else. Can you give us a little upgrade, update on what, what that really consists of?
Certainly. PCL 108, potential change order 108, was generated by the FFNE final design. And this is a good opportunity to tell you that next month, we'll be bringing the bids for the FFNE for the middle school before you for approval. Trying to get that in because I forgot to get it in. It's a future action item tonight, so hopefully we can count this. But as you go through this design of FFNE, that's sort of your final chance also to finalize items in the building. And during this pass-through with FFNE, there were a lot of appliances added in the building. Microwave ovens, ice makers, those kind of things. And each of those require their own individual circuit. A duplex outlet for service, normally you can put several duplex outlets on a circuit. With an appliance, that's normally just one circuit going all the way back to a panel. And, you know, we have about a five-page breakdown on electrical components. And as you add it up, just those circuits, you know, there are almost 14 circuits added. That's conduit, wiring, penetration through walls, and it just adds up to about 59,000. It's also the reason that the plumbing is fairly high. That's any of those items that use water or have sewage that come with them, then that's additional plumbing that has to be added to the building. But that was really primarily the addition of 14 or 15 circuits for appliances that are added during the FFNE finalization.
Thanks, Greg. I will look for a motion if no additional questions.
We're going to do all?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve action bid contract agreement 6.01 to 6.10 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Joy.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
One other item I'd like to take care of, we could, before the break. Cassie's the auditor here. Okay, so we don't keep her around through the comfort break and recognition, why don't we go ahead and have a few things you want to say about the audit report? You seem all excited.
Yeah. Good evening. I would like to introduce to you Audrey Oderman of Meis Hauser &amp; Company. Audrey and her team performed the district's financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2017. And tonight, she'll be providing you with an overview of the audit results, and she will also stand for any questions.
Cool, thanks. Welcome, Audrey.
Thank you very much. I want John to come to my house and explain my tax bill to my husband. Great.
I can give you his cell phone number at the end.
All right, well. All right, well, we're going to start with our auditor's report. This report goes through and it talks about the different auditing standards we use, talks about management's responsibility, our responsibility in regards to the financial statements. But more importantly, and what you want to know, is our opinion on the financial statements. That's in the last paragraph on page one. It goes through and it talks about all the various components of these financial statements, the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the major funds, budgetary comparison schedules. And it gives an opinion for each of those components. It's an unmodified, unmodified opinion for each component, which is the highest opinion that these financial statements can receive. It speaks about the work that the staff does every day, the direction that you give them, not just when we're out here for the audit. So they do a very good job, very professional staff. I want to move forward a little bit and just highlight one note disclosure that's different than it has been in the past. It's a new note disclosure. Government auditing standards come out, and they issue new standards every year, rapid-fire. This year, the only one that really applied to your financial statements was on tax abatements. So if you look at page 46, there's a note disclosure and they're about tax abatements, that's never been there before. So obviously, the school district can't issue tax abatements, but they are affected by county and city tax abatements. So that note disclosure is right there on page 46. If you want a lot of detail on what makes up that tax abatement amount, Cassie has that very large schedule in her office. But that is the total of $1.9 million. Okay, so I want to move forward a little bit to page 83. This is our, it's a special part of the audit. It's the audit of the expenditures of federal awards. Any entity that spends more than $750,000 in federal aid has to have this special audit. We go through and we rotate the major programs that we're going to look at every year. All of the programs are on page 83. So you can see all of the different programs that the district has spent federal money in. If you go forward to page 85, you'll see the findings of this particular part of the audit. You'll see there about, close to the bottom, the different programs that we selected and audited this year. They included special education, Title I, Head Start, and a new grant to the district this year, temporary assistance for needy families. We look at compliance over all of these grants. Look at a lot of invoices, a lot of different federal compliance regulations. And also, because most, all of these grants go through the state before they come to you, the state adds some compliance regulations on as well. So we're looking at state compliance as well. You'll see right in the middle, our opinion on this part of the audit. That's an unmodified opinion, so that's the highest opinion that this particular schedule can receive as well. We move forward to page 87 and 88. This is our second letter of communication within the financial statements. Our professional standards don't allow us to give an opinion on internal control, but they do want us to notify you if we find not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And that is the point of this letter. So as you go through, you'll see that we do note we did not have any material weaknesses. We did not have any significant deficiencies. If you go forward on, towards the bottom of that page, you'll also note that we didn't see any material non-compliance issues with state laws and regulations. And our last letter of communication within the financial statements starts on page 89. This goes through and gives a lot of really technical language over the work that we did on that schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And so within here, it talks about our opinion. It talks about the different compliance testing that we did as well. Again, an unmodified opinion on that part of the financial statements. Okay, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and present tonight. Yes, go ahead.
Can you tell us a little bit about the TANF, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, right? That funding, is it the PAT piece that it's new with, or?
Well, it actually used to be. It's a program that's been established at the district for a while, but the, but they, but they used federal funding this year in place of some federal funding that was in place. I believe that the district is the co-op lead. It's a co-op, and the district is the co-op lead. So some of that money flowed through to other school districts as well. I believe Kansas City Kansas School District is one. Do you think? Yep. Right, so not all the money was spent here. Some of it came through here and then flowed through to the other districts, and the Olahtha School District had to then monitor those district expenditures as well.
Is there a maintenance of effort piece on TANF dollars?
There, I do not believe that there is.
Okay. And so Cassie's nodding, this was PAT, the changes that we did from funding through Children's Initiative Fund?
Correct.
Which is non-tax revenue, it's tobacco settlement dollars and protected right now, hopefully forever. So this, the, us being kind of the warehouse, you know, and then trickle out to the other districts, does it impact us financially at all, or it's just procedural?
It's just procedural.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So if it's just procedural, why do we do that? I thought I recalled that from other, there was a reason that we were doing that other than just having big hearts.
Why is it, since he's not on the mic, what was his answer?
What? Oh. Yeah, we do get a small percentage, and we do have staff that we employ that do oversee that consortium. So there are some small expenses that do show up on our side of running that consortium. So there's a little bit of a benefit to it.
Okay. Thank you. Good question.
Other questions or comments?
No, just great work. Everybody on the staff, that's awesome.
Thank you Audrey. Thanks guys.
Thanks.
So with that, I would look for a motion to seven point zero one.
Move to approve the audit reports for fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand seventeen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wickliff and a second by Mr. Shear. Joy.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
And, gosh, after listening to an audit report, bond refinancing, and real estate bill, we're gonna take a break. After a break, we'll come back in at seven P M. And also enjoy, out there where you would, an elementary art reception. I think that's what several people are running around viewing now, so enjoy that. We'll see you back here at seven.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We are gonna begin our recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skudover, Community Development, to come forward, along with Cindy Von Felth from the Olahtha Public Schools Foundation. Tonight, we'll be recognizing Farmers Insurance. With the following from Farmers, please come forward. David Ranky. David Younger. Tiffany Galvin. Joshua Sharp. Susan Brooks. Christopher Graham. Jennifer Bartlett. Stephen Conley. Greg Mosley. Scott Farrell. Jennifer Darby. Leah Smith. And Manuel Escobar. Farmers Insurance is a longtime and strong community partner with the Olahtha Public Schools. Their support to students, staff, and families is present on an annual basis. For example, Farmers supports the following programs. The Olahtha Public Schools Foundation through the annual school supply and backpack program. The Olahtha's Twenty-First Century Academy Skills for Success seminars. Youth mentors, adoptive school partnerships, teacher extranee program, construction trades program. They contribute to our habitat projects and much, much more. We thank you to Farmers Insurance for all that you do. [applause] Thank you. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Olahtha North teacher Amy Clement to come forward, along with principal Jason Herman. Amy was named the twenty-seventeen Outstanding High School Chemistry Teacher of the Midwest Region by the American Chemical Society. She received her honor at the twenty-seventeen American Chemical Society Award banquet in October. Congratulations. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Andy Heinecke, District Special Services Coordinator, to come forward, along with Executive Director of Special Services Laney Pasulo. Andy was named the Emporia State University twenty-seventeen Teachers College Recent Outstanding Graduate. The Outstanding Graduate, Recent Graduate Award recognizes a graduate no more than ten years past graduation for outstanding success in the field of education. Here, it is Specialist in Education from Emporia State and Master's in School Psychology in two thousand eight. Congratulations. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Indian Trail Principal Sarah Guerrero and Executive Director of General Administration for Secondary Programs Jim McMullin to come The Kansas School Counselor Association selected Sarah to receive the prestigious K S C A Principal Advocate Award. This award is designed to recognize the unique contributions of the school administrator in working with the school counselor to maximize the impact of the school counseling program in serving students and families. She was honored at the K S D E School Counseling Conference at Emporia State. Congratulations. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Countryside Elementary Library Clerk Roberta Ralph to come forward, along with Principal Amy Hercules, District Library Media Coordinator Lori Franklin, and Library and Media Specialist Linda Ross. Roberta recently wrote and published the book Anna and the Sea Star. The picture book follows a young girl who finds a starfish on the beach and has to make a choice about whether to take it home with her or leave it to go back to the sea. No spoilers here, you'll all read it yourselves. But we'd like to congratulate you on the success of your book. For our next recognition, we'd like to honor a group of Twenty-First Century Computer Science Academy students. Would students Cameron Johnson, Matt Bash, Drake Preble, and Aaron Wiley come forward, along with Computer Science Academy facilitator Tim Shipley and Principal Clint Albers? This group placed first at the University of Kansas School of Engineering's High School Design Programming Competition. During the competition, they were presented a series of programming problems to solve within a period of time. Problems tested their knowledge of programming logic and algorithmic thinking, and they each earned a five-hundred-dollar scholarship from the K U School of Engineering. Congratulations. And are your families here? We'd love for them to stand to be recognized as well. Next, I am thrilled to share some athletic championships. Let's start with gymnastics. Would the Olahtha Northwest Gymnastics Team please come forward, along with Coaches Mallory West and Allison Crumbigo, Principal Chris Look and Athletic Director Joe Henderson? This team was named the twenty-seventeen Six A State Champions. This is the first state gymnastics championship for Olahtha Northwest. In addition, Sidney Weeks, Sidney, if you could wave?
Sidney.
Sidney, wait.
What, Weeks?
Sidney was named the state champion in balance beam, floor exercise vault, and all-around. Absolutely amazing. Congratulations to you all. And we know your parents are here, we want them to stand. Our last team recognition of tonight, we're gonna be recognizing the Olahtha North Boys' Cross Country Team. Wood Principal Jason Herman, Athletic, Coaches Levi Huesman, Jeff Swift, Jared Wisner, and Kim Dykes, please come forward with your team. The North Boys' Cross Country Team placed first at state. They also were regional champs, and two runners from North, Brian Beach, wait, is Brian here? Okay. And Jackson Caldwell, placed second and third respectively at state. So congratulations on an awesome season. And Cross Country families, please stand and be recognized as well. There you go. Our final recognition is to recognize three board members and our superintendent. We are recognizing them for completing the Kansas Association of School Board's Leadership Academy Training, so please stand in your place as I call your name. Leeta Felter, Amy Martin, and Brett McCune, and of course, John Allison. Congratulations.
We have one more, I'd like to share with everybody. Mike, if you would come down here, please. Mike, as you know, he is... Maybe you don't know, this is his last board meeting after twelve years on our board. He has made a commitment to our community and our students and our schools over that period of time, and as he would tell you, worse had to see him leave, but I think he said he's ready. He's done a valued job with our district. I'm just gonna read some of the words that I had shared with the group earlier this afternoon. Mike was first elected in two thousand five, then again, two thousand nine, and then two thousand thirteen. And in those twelve years, he has seen and been a part of six hundred million dollars worth of bond issues to help our district continue to grow and meet the needs of incoming students and families. During that period of time, he's seen middle schools, he's seen high schools, that his name is on, also the, his name is on, he's been a part of as far as the discussions and how those should be completed. He's also been in numerous boundary discussions. And y'all remember the reconfiguration back in, gosh, I don't know what year that was, but that was a big deal, and Mike always came to the table. He was always prepared. He would ask the challenging questions that was important to the district and again, the students. What was amazing about Mike is that he continued to always have students first, he was always conscious of paperance. You and I, being taxpayers, he was a great steward of our community, of our school district, and again, helping our students achieve the great things that they do. So it is with sadness that we see Mike go, but again, we are proud of his legacy. His legacy will live on in our building and in our students' lives forever and ever, and he's touched thousands and thousands of kids and students. And Mike, we thank you very much.
I want to thank everybody. I do have a few things I would like to say, and I did write them down, so I wouldn't forget anything. First of all, and at the reception we had earlier, I didn't take time to thank my wife for the patience she had and all the years I spent on the board. You know, I get to stand up here and, you know, be around all these great people and everything, and she sits at home and I guess watches HGTV a lot. But she's been by herself a lot, so I didn't get a chance to say that about her before. You know, she's been a big supporter, and naturally, everybody knows that it takes support at home also for something like this. You know, this is my last time, you know, being on the board. I've got the opportunity to be, have a little bit of center stage here, so I'm gonna take advantage of it, okay? So first thing I want to do is say that, you know... First thing I want to do is say that, you know, with me leaving the board, any semblance of balance between K U, K State is gone. So that being the case, I'm gonna take advantage of my time left on the board. So, just in case anybody knows or wants to know where my allegiance is, take a guess. So, you know, I want to call attention to a couple things here, is purple is going to a bowl this year, one of the only schools, Kansas schools going, I think. And right now is the only time probably this season I'll be able to brag that of all the three major universities in Kansas, K State has the highest winning percentage. They're eight and one, everybody's seven and one. And we know that when we go to the Big Twelve season, so. Anyway, another thing I want to do real quick is, one of the things that clubs I belong to, the Lath Optimist, New Optimist Club, presents dictionaries to every fourth grader in the district. And so I get to be a part of doing that, and one of the times, one of the schools, Black Bob Elementary, I asked John Allison to go with me, okay? So, and when I was there, I declared him a honorary fourth grade student. So... By the power vested in me, I am declaring the rest of my school board members honorary fourth grade students. From the Olahtha New Optimist Club, I got that one in my bag. One thing I've learned about being on board is don't take yourself seriously, just have a lot of fun. I've had a lot of fun. Oh, no pressure on my fellow board members, but I just want to read a couple of the thank yous that we got from the fourth graders at Black Bob. One of the things we did is we had them look up a couple of words, and one of those words was leader, because I introduced John Allison as a leader of our school district, and that's where I got into the boss, that he's the boss of the school district. So here's one, "Thank you, Mr. Poland, for coming to our school." And they all did our, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you." "I shall award you with a trophy." "Thank you for the dictionary. I think your job is awesome." That's what the dictionary says. "I like the word that the teacher had them work up and look up a word to. I like the word, let's see, mature, because it means you're all grown up." And it says, "Dear Mr. Allison, thank you for coming to our school, taking your time away from work. I like the word mature, because it means you're all grown up." And then this is a nice, nice arc. "Thank you, Mr. Poland, for the amazing dictionary. You're so nice. You're the best. I wish you guys came every year. Mr. Poland, I think you're the best school board member." And "Mr. Allison is the best superintendent of school. Excellent. My favorite word is..." Anyway, that's some of the joy you get of doing things like that, and how I was glad I was able to share it with John also. But in closing, just real quick, I want to just say a few words here. You know, I've had the opportunity to serve with three superintendents. Two of them I got to pick, and one I got to serve with and got to pick her a second time, Dr. All. But, you know, I consider, if anything that I'm leaving behind are some of the most important things I did while I was on the board, was pick the leadership for this school district. I had the honor of being able to, you know, be the one that selected Dr. Allison, I mean, John Allison, and then also Dr. Barry, and then Dr. All, I got to serve, I came with her and I'm gonna go out with her. She came, she left in June, but that, normally I wouldn't have been out then too, but I got an extra, you know, extra six months of pay, which, which I, you know, I can't wait till she shows up on my paper when I retire. One thing I would like to say is that by the people we did hire, that I feel that, I guess I pat myself on the back, I'm a good judge of character here, because every one of them promised to double my salary, and each one of them did. Right? Absolutely. So, anyway, it's, you know, seriously, it's been a blessing to serve the city of Olahtha. As many of you know, I was born and raised here, my wife was born and raised here, we had four boys. Now I have one grandson in the school district also. But, you know, Olahtha's meant so much to us, so it's been a real pleasure and a real blessing to be able to serve Olahtha and also, you know, the students of Olahtha. It's been a real blessing to sit, you know, to serve with the best staff, best teachers, best school board in anywhere, in anybody. anywhere, anybody that I can think of, any area that I can think of. Olathe is a tremendous community, got great schools, and we got great teachers. They just have so much passion and enthusiasm. You know, I told you, Mrs. Stoltz was my niece. You know, you talk about the passion there. You can see the passion all over her face, and, you know, and that's every time when I go into a school district or into a school to visit classrooms or anything like that, that passion just comes through, and that's just something that I'm so proud of. One of the things, you know, that I'm really proud of is since I lived down in the old part of Olathe, is the Mill Creek Learning Center. See that thing turn around the way it was. When I came on the board, basically it was empty. We were almost ready to sell it to the city for a dollar. And we kept it and basically finally found a use and turned it into just a wonderful facility. So that's something that, I guess, I'd go drive by it every day. I've just loved watching it develop, and now I get to see it be filled up with our programs. So, in, you know, in conclusion, basically, I just know I'm leaving the district in great hands with the leadership we have here. Mr. Geary's going to be coming and taking my position. You know, one of the things that, at the reception here, there were so many good things said about me that were totally undeserved, but I took them anyway.[985.44][985.44](laughter) You know, but my wife, you know, if she had been allowed to talk, she'd have probably brought me down to earth real quick. She'd have humbled me real quick. So, but anyway, I'm living in the school district in great hands. You know, I'm not leaving. I feel like I'm saying goodbye, but I'm not saying goodbye. I'm just saying goodbye to that seat right there. So, and I've always explained my position, my, what I felt like, the, you know, the experience I've had on the school board. And basically, that's been, I feel like I was traded to a Super Bowl team the week before they won the Super Bowl. I've had nothing to do with the success of the school district, but boy, have I got to share in the glory of it, and it goes to all of you. And so thank you for allowing me to serve you, and I wish you continued, sis, and you'll continue to be in my prayers forever. So, thank you.[1042.32][1042.32](applause)
Yeah, I think we'll go ahead. We'll let Mike go ahead and wear his jacket.
Yeah, I'm going to take it off.[1082.11][1082.11](laughter)
Wear it with pride, Mike.
Ready for public comments?
Please.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address.
Do we have anybody that's seen you'd like to address the board? See none, will proceed. We are back at action items other 7.02. That's a legislative focus, our legislative platform for 2018.
And I would just make a comment and actually propose that we add an amendment to what has been presented to the board. And this is based off of discussion in the Legislative Committee and Executive Committee. And that would be to include the following language with regards to the Kansas Constitution. It reads, "The Olathe School District Board of Education opposes removing or redefining the suitable education provision of the Kansas Constitution so as to diminish state and local support for high-quality programs and services that support learning for all Kansas students."
Okay, that is an addition that you proposed in the legislative platform for 2018.
Yeah, to simply add that language after, again, discussion with the Legislative Committee and Executive Committee.
Okay. Will you read it one more time?
I will.
Sorry.
"The Olathe School District Board of Education opposes removing or redefining the suitable education provision of the Kansas Constitution so as to diminish state and local support for high-quality programs and services that support learning for all Kansas students."
Questions or comments, Rick, of the board members?
I don't have a comment or question on that, but, so I don't know if we need to vote on that first and then have more discussion, or what's the...
That would be an inclusion, a part of our vote.
In light of what Dustin told us about the bond cap, I'm wondering if we need some language in there regarding that as well. Is that something...
If you'll take a look under School Finance, the bullets are carryovers from last year's legislative platform, with the exception of the very last one under School Finance. And as you take a look at that, it tried to address the last sentence of arbitrary limits on the amount of school district bond issues should not be imposed. And if that's strong enough for...
That's good, okay.
Do you think they'll note that that means the cap?
Well, we'll have Cheryl carry this message.
Good.
Any other discussion? Mr. Beveridge? Good. Okay. I would look for a motion.
I move to approve the legislative platform for the Olathe School District for 2018 as presented.
With the addition.
Yes.
Second.
So, a motion by Mrs. Martin, and a second by Ms. Felter. Joy.
I want to make sure I have this right first. To approve the legislative platform for the Olathe School District for 2018 as presented with the addition.
With the addition read by Mr. Whitcliffe.
Okay. And you said that? Amy?
Yeah, Amy and Ms. Felter.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
And moving on to future action items. Twenty-four future action items listed. Student trips, curriculum. Didn't know if there'd be any questions there. Just wanted just to touch base or board policy.
Yeah, on items 8.14 and 8.15, we don't need it today, but I think that there are some curriculum changes that, good things, but I'd like to, would like to call out and would like to, I guess, request or see if we could get a presentation maybe next month on some of those changes, because I think those are important to need for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcliffe. Also, some bidding schedules on some construction projects, Elementary School 36 and naming Elementary School 36. Moving on to written information. Any questions on the Head Start Director's Report or the Parent Teachers Conference? Anyone need additional information or wanted to share out? Okay. Topics for discussion by board members. Anything, any of you have on your mind that you just want to share with us?
I'd extend my thanks to my fellow board members and for Mr. Allison coming out to KASB's annual conference. We had a great time out there. I think we all learned a lot and took care of some good business on behalf of the association, and I really appreciate it.
It was a good conference, also the 100th year of KASB, which, talking about some of the history, some of the issues that we're dealing with today. Fifty years later and 75 years later, they were dealing with them back then, too. So, school finance, they're still talking about that in the 30s, 40s, and 50s. Moving on to executive session.
Superintendent.
Pardon me?
Superintendent.
I just moved right over you.
I mean, I like moving along. That's fine. Just, and I'll make it very brief. One is just to reiterate what Mr. McKeon said, that beginning in January, we will move our recognitions and our public comments to six o'clock. So we'll start our meeting and then move into those items and then be able to proceed with the rest of the meeting. We will be making sure that we note that, and Communications already has a plan put together to try to make sure that everyone knows of that change. I would like to commend J. Hudson and his staff, the audit findings that we had. To have a budget the size of ours with the complications, and particularly when you're talking about government accounting, there's always nuances that change, and to come back with a completely clean audit is pretty amazing. I mean, not even any minor findings is exceptional. So I want to, I would like to commend all of those folks that were involved in accomplishing that. A special thank you to Forest View. Had an opportunity to spend this morning with the leader and me. Very impressive. Some unbelievable students. In particular, one young lady who was our tour guide for our group through the building, probably has a future right now at the Smithsonian or some other places. She was unbelievable. That was fantastic to see. And Dr. Greer, I'm going to put you on the spot because you're still here. Would you come up to the mic real quick? The last piece, there's no reason for me to describe the process when we've got our future principal at Summit Trail here. Would you tell the board a little bit about how you went about getting the input for the school mascot and the colors, and then when we get done, we're going to be able to put it up on the screen to be able to announce? But tell them about the process, would you?
Okay, first, we started off with trying to figure out, narrowing it down to three finalists, if you want to call them that. And we, our three finalists were Saber Cat, Bob Cat, and the Stallion. And we also narrowed it down to three colors, and it was black, silver, white, and black, silver, burgundy, black, silver, burnt orange. So we went out to all the feeder elementaries, Millbrook, Ravenwood, and Fairview. And we also went to Mission Trail and Prairie Trail, broke it down in two days. And the process was creating a Google form so that students could be able to use their iPads, given that they had their iPads, and a QR code. They were excited, just dying to see it. Showed them once how to do it. They went right at it. Scanned the QR code, and they voted, and immediately shot back the results to them. So after, it was interesting to see what the different schools voted for. But in the end, the winner was the Saber Cat, and the colors were black, silver. And I'm wearing the colors tonight.[1696.18][1696.18](applause) It was exciting, and the kids are really excited. They were really, really, I would say that the Saber Cat won. I would say 90% of the kids voted for the Saber Cat.
Thank you.
And that concludes my comments for the session.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. So, Executive Committee, Executive Session, we've got about 40 minutes.
I move the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel pursuant to non-elected personnel, exception under KOMA, and the board return to regular meeting at 25:815.
Second.
Have a motion by...[1754.62][1754.62](laughter) And a second by Ms. Martin.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.